Let the time show that the record show that the time is six o'clock Central, Daylight Time, regular City Council meeting Monday, June 16, 2014, at Jasper City Hall, 465 South Main Street, for a regular monthly meeting. Let the record all shows to show that all members of the Jasper City Council present for this meeting. We'd like to first of all welcome everyone to the people's house. We're glad that you're here. Please make yourself at home and feel welcome here tonight. This is your house. And we would like to ask that you turn off your cell phone or pagers. I guess I've got them. Anyway, whatever mine may call us, so that it doesn't interrupt our meeting. Up first, we'll have Bonnie, would you lead us in a word of prayer?
Yes, sir, I sure will.
Thank you.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with open minds and open hearts to do what is best for Jasper, Texas. And we thank you for all of our many blessings that you've given us. And we hope that with our open minds and our open hearts, that we will be able to do the best we can for our city and our county and our state. In God's name, amen.
Amen. We have up first the information for council members. You have your information that has been provided to you in previous days in your pocket regarding the operation of various departments within the city and what they're functioning and what they're doing and how, what's going on there. Be in no questions or concerns, boys. We'll move forward. Thanks. We have the departmental reports and proclamation for presentation to Steve Killingsworth. Mr. Killingsworth, you're here tonight? Yeah, I thought I saw you come in. We have something that, well, bottom line for many of you that grew up here, raised here, know that Jasper's focal point for many years was the Top Burger at the intersection of 1996. Many of us went there for knowledge, education, try to better our community, try to become better citizens than we were. What's everybody laughing about? This is serious, no. Most of us went down there and got in trouble sometimes, but anyway, Monzingo's provided a good place and good food. And I can still see Noel Monzingo Senior standing there right now at that window from morning to night and take that sack and use it as what he put the order of. And then as soon as he got through with Ratcliffe's order, he called, got ready, he'd say, "Rat", "Paul". And every go up to the window and get our order and get our hamburger. And I can still see Hamburglar Grant standing in the back window cooking those, he was right behind him every bit of the way. And I think when I did a news story, when they, I'm trying to remember, when they did a news story in Jasper, when they legalized beer, I think that Hamburglar Grant bought the first beer at Brooks and Brothers when we did a news story on that. He was so proud of that. And I can't remember, what was his name? Rieck?
Calvin.
Calvin, okay. He's a good guy. But anyway, we have with us tonight, Ms. Monzingo, you're here? I thought you said you. But anyway, we have with us Steve, and recently, Steve Killingsworth recently purchased the Bull that turned down there for many years. He found it. Where, Steve?
Well, my father-in-law actually tore the Top Burger out. And it took me about five years to talk him out of that. And I've had it hidden out at my house for 27 years. So I brought it back to the shop and redoing it and putting it on display and, you know, everybody can see it.
Well, I would like to stand here and present this to you tonight, but I think that somebody more appropriate should stand here and present this to you tonight. The person that I know that probably got in more trouble than anybody at the Top Burger was Tommy Scofield. And I'd like for him and a former member of our state police, Raymond Hopson, to stand here on each side and present to you this night. I think this would be an honor. Can you, everybody agree? Give me a hand if you agree with that. How recent are you?
Hey, now, remember, he was a state trooper all over here.
I will confess to one thing, if it had not been for Mr. Noel, I would have probably been in a penitentiary. He took care of me so many times that I love him to this day for that, no doubt.
Y'all go stand over there in front of the stage. Don't hindray me. Let me say this, I'm not implying that the Top Burger anyway was a place to get in trouble, but it was a place for teenagers to, you know, to hang out. So that's kind of like a place for gasoline and fire to hang out, you know. Where is the Top Burger service? Jasper's Texas icon for approximately 22 years located atop the Top Burger sign at the intersection of US, wait a minute. Where is the Top Burger Bull served as Jasper, Texas icon for approximately 22 years located atop the Top Burger sign at the intersection of US Highway 1996? And where is Steve Killingsworth acquired the Top Burger Bull when Top Burger was demolished in 1987? Whereas over the past several years, the Top Burger Bull has suffered severe damage and disfigurement. Whereas Steve Killingsworth has with loving care and attention restored the Top Burger Bull to its previous iconic manifestation. And whereas Steve Killingsworth was kind and gracious enough to share the Top Burger Bull with the entire Jasper area by lending it to the city of Jasper to display in this year's rodeo parade and hereby winning first place in the civic division of the parade. Now therefore, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of Jasper, I do hereby deem it an honored pleasure to extend the certificate of recognition to Steve Killingsworth of Jasper with sincere gratitude and proclamation. June 16th is day of celebration and thanks and honor of Steve Killingsworth and witness thereof. And presenting it is our Mayor Pro Tem, Raymond Hopson, former Texas Highway Patrol, now converted. And on the other side is our City Council member, Tommy Scofield, ex-criminal, now converted.
The only thing I can say about this, if that Bull could talk, it'd all be in trouble. You all know that.
That's a fact.
Steve, we thank you very much. We appreciate your time and done.
And I want to say, Steve, that a lot of times people see things and they do things and they watch things and they don't see anything. And I know that all the problems that you've had with your health in the last few years, you continue to handle business and be down there and as much as you can do a great job, and I have all the admiration and respect for you. Okay, we have departmental, well, we have, I pretty much covered that earlier, departmental reports and information. Then we have the public comment, nobody has tendered me a public comment, so we will consider approval for one set of minutes, regular City Council meeting, May 19, 2014. Have a motion by City Council member Hazel Johnson. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. McMillan. All those in favor say aye. And he got opposition. Let the record show that the measure passed unanimously. Consider resolution number 2937 supporting the Sand Creek Park Arboretum and Nature Trail project. Have a motion? Moved and approved by Mr. Scott. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. And opposed. Let the record show that the measure passed unanimously. Up next, number three. This is a consider request for appraisal of the Boys and Girls Club building formerly the old US Post Office from commercial appraiser Bob Taylor, with the city's administration advise us about this.
This old post office is in the discussion program here. We cannot just give it to anybody as much as we'd like to, because there's lots of people that want it. So it was my recommendation to ask you if we could possibly go get an appraisal of the building and put it out for bid and sell property.
So, second. Motion by Mr. McMillan, second by Mr. Hopson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show that the measure passed unanimously. Up next, item number four. Consider the Jasper Independent School District funding for Daniel Jackson McKenzie Trust Fund. Administration.
This was a trust fund that was awarded to the city of Jasper for the use of Jasper Independent School District for improvements in indoor buildings. It was around $244,000. They are at 75% of their construction. And that was what the stipulation was, they're going to build, it's going to be an activity center and it's going to bear his name. We've already funded the money, this is just a order of approval. Y'all approve and that's the one handed following through with original intention.
Do we have a motion? Moved and approved by Mr. Scott. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion?
There was, this fund was set up to give scholarships to high school seniors, not just seniors, but senior young men. And they dished out, about $10,000 a year until this fund reached a certain value and then reverted back to us as custodians to be able to use for something at Jasper High School. So, just to let everybody know, this funding of this money supported a lot of high school senior, young men throughout the last probably 25 years.
Also, I'd like to add, Councilman, that I've had some people ask me about this money, could it be used to this or that? And like you said, the Daniel Jackson McKenzie Trust, undoubtedly this was a very rich man in Houston, had some friends, maybe some relatives here. And when the trust got down to a limited amount of money, his trust declared what would be done with it would be spent for a project at the school, to be determined not by the city, but by the school. And then we would, upon 75% completion, hand that money forth. The council will see there's a letter there from Mr. Scofield, the school president, who is saying that they aren't at that point. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Let the record show the measure passed unanimously. Consider a request for 3% salary increase for our city employees. Administration.
I will.
Okay.
Done.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like.
Do you have, for the record, the motion, the second?
What do you think?
Discussion?
I'm not against giving a raise, you know, but I think that, I've got some reservations about this and I've got some questions that I might have to clarify. I've been on the council for 25 months and this is the third request that we've had for 3% rate increase. Apparently, this is something that's kind of rubber stamped, hasn't been for a number of years. We didn't do it last year, I know, but prior to that, for the past several years, it's been known. I'm just wondering if it's accomplishing its intended purpose, which my first question would be, I guess, what's the purpose of the raise?
This is the second time that we have gone for this purpose as using SMVRDA refund. We didn't allow, our budget didn't allow us to give our employees a 3% raise at the beginning of each fiscal year. So this is the second time that we've come through in the middle of the year after we have gotten this SMVR refund and come to council to ask them to give them that 3% raise eight months after they normally would have gotten one, had the finances and the condition been.
Well, are we creating a situation here because we're creating a permanent expense by giving a raise? And we're, this is not a permanent revenue, or at least it's a fluctuating revenue.
This is correct, but it will also be calculated upon the budget. We will not go back in on it. We won't have the funds to calculate another 3% in October. What we're doing is our employees are losing eight months out of each fiscal year until we are unable to have the funds to give them a raise.
Well, you know, are we creating a situation where we are incentivizing all things? I know, you know, if Joe and Larry are working on a crew, and Larry's a crew boss, doesn't come to work on it, doesn't do his job completely. And Joe does a good job, on time, every day, very compliant, does excellent work, and these guys both get the same raise. And what's happening in there?
I understand that.
You know, Joe's going to come away with what? What's the point?
But we've also taken away the incentive raises. We have not given incentive raises. Usually on everybody's anniversary date, they are evaluated by their supervisor.
Well, that's where I was going with this. Are we doing that?
No, we're not. We're evaluating them, but we are not giving them any raises.
Should we go back to that?
Well...
I mean, you know, and since we're already going through the process of evaluation, run it back up to the supervisor, through the city manager?
Well, but we don't, we don't do it on an annual basis. So if somebody's, their anniversary date's in January and they get an evaluation and they get a 2% or 3% raise, and then another employee, his anniversary date is in October, then that one employee waits 10 months. And they might be a better employee than one that got the 2% in January, but they're holding off. And then funds may not be available when he comes around in October.
Yeah. Well, the other thing that concerns me about this particular request is that I know that this was given in 2011, it was granted in 2012, it was requested in 2013, but we didn't, we didn't approve it. Well, it wasn't put on the agenda. And here we are again.
I thought you were discussing a budget workshop. We never, we never put it on the agenda because you're...
The information that we were given in 2012 when we approved the 3% increase was that that would add a total to the wages and salaries of $55,500. And I noticed 3% of what we were presented with this was $154,000. So there's...
That was just for the rest of the budget year, $55,000. This is on annual basis.
Mr. East, ask one question. Instead of having an annual evaluation, maybe it might be common sense to set up the month of June or July to evaluate employees and grant them a raise, like July 1st, August 1st, from this money, just set some of it back until that comes. The bottom line, and I've said this before and I'll say it fair, if you don't pay the employees, you're not going to have good employees. They'll go somewhere else. And I truly believe that in the most part, we have a group of people that is working for the city of Jasper that are doing a good job. I've looked through the findings and the information in front of this, there's a few that, you go have them everywhere, that are not doing quite as much as the man next to you. But there could be a reason for that. They have more responsibilities than the rest. But I just truly believe, like, if we don't keep our employees where they can feel comfortable about their salaries, they go once in forever.
And I want you to understand, I'm not against giving people raises, but I'm questioning whether or not the method in which we've been doing it is actually working for us or against us. Is it disincentivizing people from going that extra mile and doing it better? You know, when they see others getting that same raise, they're getting, you know...
We will do whatever.
And I appreciate, and the other thing was, again, I couldn't reconcile the difference between these two 3% increases here, what was going on there.
Well, I'd like a suggestion that maybe we look into, administration look into, maybe doing something where we evaluate our employees once a year and making it, say, a 30-day stretch whereas we can give them all that got a raise coming at the same time rather than their annual one year. Because that'll only offset things one year, and from that point on, it will be an annual evaluation. Just something I was thinking.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the measure passed unanimously. Up next is item number six. Is considered from New Texas Municipal League Interlocal Agreement and Cobra, Continuation of Coverage Administrative Agreement. I believe we would probably, on this item, ask Mr. Whitehead to come forth. Would that be great?
Yes, that's fine. These are two annual agreements that come each year. What it does is it designates the municipal league as our provider for medical, for our city medical plan. And they also handle continuation of coverage on resigning employees as well.
Him back to the city, Mr. White.
Well, in order to offer a medical plan, you're going to have to have someone in order to do it. The Texas Municipal League is about the cheapest plan administrator.
Yeah, we did this last year. I remember you telling us about this.
We do it every year.
We're basically farming out the Cobra administration. And then the other thing is basically just to notice that they've joined a multi-state group.
That they are a multi-state, that's right. But both of these agreements come up every, every year. And our contract runs from October 1 through the end of September.
We've had no problem with agreeing it all.
Our medical rates are the lowest in all of state of anyone. They're a non-problem.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson, second by Mr. Scott. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show that the measure passed unanimously. Item number seven. City's Finance Department is requesting that there be a, anyway, consider the purchasing policy for the city of Jasper administration.
In the past, when we have a purchase, that has been a bond purchase or anything else, anytime a purchase or a grant purchase is made, not bond, grant, when it's brought to you at the time of approval, we already have the bids and all the processes. This is just a brick apart to update that policy to say that we had brought it to you one time, you've approved it. Now we've gone through the process, it's time to bid it out, get the bids in. And if it's a big project, they come back to you. If it's a normal everyday thing that you've already approved once, it's just to prevent it from coming back to you again and redundantly on the same information. All that is, it's just...
Tell them. Motion by Mr. McMillan, there was a second by Mr. Scott, personally. Any further discussion? All those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the measure passed unanimously. Item number eight. Consider request from City Council member Hazel Johnson considering the ordinance within the city against prohibiting saggy pants. I'm going to let Mrs. Johnson present this.
I was in a convenience store, I stopped by a convenience store one day, and in front of me were two young men where their pants pulled down past the butt. One of them's underwear was so thin, I could read through the loom on it. And I'm not kidding, that's the truth. Now, I don't know about any other women in this building, but I don't want to stand behind somebody and have to look at that, okay? Can you just picture me, you know, standing in line and a young man standing behind me and looking at my granny pants? I can't. So, I don't know what the statement is, but to me, it's a statement of disrespect. So, I think that every young man should wear their pants up.
Do we have a motion?
My motion. I make a motion to her.
Do we have a second? Motion by Mrs. Johnson, second by Mr. Scott. Further discussion?
In closer, further review on this, just to kind of clear the air, there's been a lot of these passed in other cities. And in almost every occasion that it was followed, the cities have passed these ordinance have been reversed in lawsuit and courtroom rulings. I think if we consider something like this, I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, I just think with us setting dress code for the whole town and roping ourselves up to a lot of them out there.
You know, once you get started with that, where does it end? Recite people for tattoos and earrings. Some of those are offensive as well. You know, some of these people need to have their tail kicked up around their ears. You know, and it's just screaming out, you know, "I'm unemployed and I don't have any plans to get a job." But there's been a lot of criticism of these laws, racial profiling, discrimination. It just invites trouble, more so than I think that passing an ordinance would solve. And I think too, it's very difficult to enforce. You know, they're going to pull the bridges up from the police rolls. So, you know, we looked at this very issue two years ago this month and we voted it down for those reasons. My mind hasn't changed. So I would not be...
It's not a racial profile.
Well...
I don't care if you're red, yellow, black, or white, what color you are.
I'm not saying it is.
I don't want to stand behind you.
I'm not saying it is. I'm saying it's criticized for those people that want to be critical and look for issues to criticize. This is a nugget teed up on. And I just don't think it's in the best interest of our city and opens us up to some criticism, which we, of all cities, don't need.
Which simply, in my opinion, the way we worded this, "Baggy Pants", I think last year it was written up in, if I remember right, the very last paragraph of the statement regarding these baggy pants, made you feel like that a man could not wear women's clothes down the street. Well, as we all know, we have cross-dressers. I agree. I do not want to see nobody behind, and I don't want my daughters and my grandchildren seeing nobody behind. It's very offensive.
Are you talking about Charlie?
Could be. But I think that, I'd like a suggestion that our city attorney, Mr. Ratcliffe, would rewrite that ordinance that we presented two years ago and kind of see if we can put a little teeth into it and go from there with it rather than just deposit it all together or pass it. Saggy pants is, it's too broad. I mean, you know, I can have my overalls on and maybe too big hanging down, but my high end's still covered up, but it's still baggy pants. And we know what the purpose of this is, is the behind, Joe, and I don't agree with that at all.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of this item number eight, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the measure fails. Consider purchase for new computers server for the city hall and three computers for our customer service department. Administration.
Mayor, council, we've been having problems, we've been limping along, only advised by our computer software experts, that the main server would last a couple more years. Well, when the XP started not to, when it stopped supporting the XP, it became a more of a crucial issue. So these funds were in our bond account that was allocated for capital purchases. We just had not identified them. So we're asking for permission to use the $20,000 remaining in the bond fund to buy the new computers for city hall. This is the main brain of ours. It runs our utility system, payroll, everything that we've got. We do have backups as far as backup files, but that is not the main server.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Is that motion to you, Mr. McMillan? Second for Mr. Scofield. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the measure passed unanimously. Item number 10. Consider approval for the 2013-2014 bond expenditures to date. Administration.
I don't know if all of y'all have seen the list of what all had been purchased and what all had been done with bond funds. We've got approximately $4.4 million of the bond, with a million and a half of it being allocated for streets. But what we were just asking and bringing to you for your information is the list of what has been purchased with those bond funds and just get a blanket approval as of today's date of everything that's been spent. Everything has been under the, all the purchasing policies, all the purchasing guidelines by the state on bids. But this was a tax anticipation bond. It was a low interest rate, about five years of it, it was at the bulk of the payment and it will go through and will go down for a few years. The streets department for fixing star feet, one and a half billion dollar streets. We're waiting to get to the one side of the bond, the grants finished, so that we will start using our equipment that we have purchased so that we should be able to do more streets ourselves with our equipment and our supplies in upper bigger territory. This is mostly the main information for you all.
Who's Tony Hopper?
He is our engineer and he is involved in almost every aspect of the city, whether it be from the streets to the water drainage to the wastewater treatment plants permits.
Point of order before we begin discussion, we have a motion?
I have a motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, move forward, Mr. Council, Mr. McNamal?
Tony Hopper.
I thought she, I thought she interrupted my...
Anything for what it adds?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that the measure passed unanimously. Item number 11, consider downtown revitalization enhancement project. And I guess administration would come forth on this. Where would, somewhere else?
Well, Ann Smith.
She's the spokesman for the group?
I am.
I was in the meeting and I forget, but how smart I am. Come forth, please.
The proposal is for landscape architectural services for a comprehensive plan to revitalize our downtown area from 190 to Model Street and from 96 to...
Bowie.
Bowie, to Bowie. And this proposal from Wado Studios, I believe y'all have a copy of, it's just a, to get us going. It's just a comprehensive plan to give us the ideas and have something comprehensive for the outcome of revitalizing Jasper. First, it is the buildings and the facades and the sidewalks and making it more attractive to get here and hopefully getting a business center and that type of thing in so we can direct our people into downtown Jasper and have something to offer downtown Jasper. And in these plans, some of these buildings have to probably go and, and get up to code. I don't believe most of, a lot of them are not up to code and that would, it would help with our parking situation downtown and invite businesses in if it were more attractive and we could get them into our downtown. I have a personal interest in this because I want my guests to be as in love with Jasper as I am. And they're not. And if I send them to town, they all ask, "What is wrong with your downtown? Is it ghost town?" They love the park, but there's not anything...
They ask the same thing about the baseball park too.
Oh, really? Well... That's... I don't know anything about the baseball park. This is the only thing I know about. And I'm, I just know that we have to get started somewhere. And this is a good plan. It's worked in the city, it's working in the city of Center and Lake Jackson. Luton has done something similar also. I don't know who they used, but these are all directing people to their downtown area and different cityscapes around. We don't have anything that is, that focuses anything to anywhere. I mean, I have to draw out maps to how to do anything in this town because nothing is cohesive. And if you've read this architect's paperwork, y'all, we've done it and he's done it in different plans as far as we can only, whatever we can find at one time. And I don't know where y'all get money and I'm not that part of the group, but it seems like that we could get an analysis and the concept going and then figure out where we get the rest of the money. You know, just get something going.
Your proposals for the city pay half of that cost and this would be contingent on JECO coming up with the rest of the cost. Do we have a motion?
Accounting.
I move.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'd like to see this...
We have a motion, we have a second?
Can we not talk about it?
Yeah, we can, but we ain't got a motion, we got a second. What's the purpose of the discussion? We can always let this down. Somebody gives us a second, then we can always let the other down.
What is your hesitation? I mean, what do I need to give you to consider?
Well, in reading through this...
Wait just a minute. Point of order, we have a motion, we have no second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second. All discussion going on that.
It seems a little pricey for what we did. We just recently, last year, we went to Master Garden for the baseball park and it was around 8,500 dollars. I see the price of this is 52 through 50. It doesn't include a hard copy. It's digital, which I guess it's going to be in the form of video, which can just be downloaded from whoever wants to look at. And I guess, I haven't had a great deal of experience. In fact, I don't know if any of us have with this sort of thing. But just based on what we did with the ballpark, this seems like a lot of money.
Well, that's a really small area. That's a really small area. And this encompasses from 190 to Model Street and 96 to Bowie. That's a huge area. And to incorporate the sidewalks and where everything can kind of flow and to see the potential what Jasper has that they've lost. I mean, it's, it's, I don't want to say dying on the vine, but that is my perspective of it. And if we don't do something, we're going to... The lake can only do so much, you know, to get people here. And there's almost, if you're, you don't have a boat or kind of host anyway to be able to take advantage of the, of the lake. There's not any public areas, or not that I know of. And I'm not the know-it-all on everything that is around the lake, but I just know that my guests can't get to a lot of the areas because they don't, they didn't come with a boat. And they want to do something in town or go have something to eat at a nice restaurant in our downtown area. We have the coolest courthouse that I've seen anywhere. And no one, and they all say that, that's a really cool courthouse. But what is wrong, you know? And I mean, I get guests from all over the world. I mean, I have 20 international guests at least. And, you know, I have them from every state in the United States come by there. And I don't know really why they're coming to Jasper, except that they're passing through. A lot of mine are travelers. Then I have, the internet's been great for me, you know, because people see that, you know, this is the pine woods and it's really cool. And, you know, other than hospitality and nature, I don't have anything else to offer. And that's why we're presenting this.
Can we title this?
Major, I think if you would see something beside the ballpark and recognize what your city looks like downtown, if you open your eyes and look, you will find out that people are not attracted to Jasper, come to see buildings that are falling down and they wonder about our economy. And I think if you would just think outside of the ballpark, you would approve some improvements for the downtown area.
Did you, did you take my remarks to mean that I was against this?
I took your remarks to mean that all you think is the ballpark.
No, that's not true.
This is...
I think this is, I think this along the same lines as the ballpark is a step, in my mind, I see the downtown revitalization or revitalization or revitalization.
Well, I'm on that committee.
Increase to the, you know, the improvements to the ballpark and expansion.
And so is your mayor.
And also annexation is issues which are going to better seed our city for growth, both in population and, and economy. And so I think, I think the downtown, you know, revitalized downtown would be a big plus.
It has to be. I mean, because if you, if you made any improvements in the buildings or the way that you get to the buildings, the parking situation and everything else, and that's what this is incorporating into that, you would be attracting businesses in. I have friends that are in business here and they said, "Well, I wanted to go downtown and I couldn't, you know, didn't have any parking." Or they had to close after six months because there was no place for them to park. I at one time had a business on the square. I was right on Austin, not Austin, what's that, Lamar. Had an antique shop there in the early 90s in there. And downtown was happening then. I mean, it was very good. And the parking situation was still an issue, but the buildings that were there were lived in. Somebody was in them. And there wasn't trash in the windows and glass broken on the, their front facades and, you know, there's paper hanging that has water stains all over it. You know, the hurricane was a long time ago now and we need to...
For those of you that have seen me up here smiling, I really enjoy it when these stupid people in Jasper say that the city council has everything already planned before we get here. I mean, it's so obvious that this council has... And I love it when council is, I'm not saying invited, but I love, you know...
Yes, you do. You both are throwing it out there and just let us have it.
Well, I mean, like this issue here, I've never spoke to you, you don't want to be done.
I think that we should...
The only one I spoke to is Hazel because we've served on that. The committee was, was put together by the mayor. And, and I don't, let me say this, and I won't get to voguing this, but I can talk during this discussion. And I'm going to pretty much outline it the way I did in here in a meeting one day about the ballpark. It bothers me as a citizen of Jasper that I go to other places covering these ballgames or broadcasting them on the radio and I can find a nice place to go to the restaurant. And I come to my hometown of Jasper and I'm going to say it in here that I do, and I says, "No reflection on the Jasper Youth Baseball." So, I'd rather go to the woods than I have to go to any of these bathrooms out here at the ballpark because they're nasty, the toilets are run over, they're disgrace to our children, they're not safe, they're not healthy. I don't even know how we're doing this.
And it's a reflection of...
And I'm not saying anything about the youth Jasper Youth Baseball Association. There's a lot of people out there that have volunteered their time and worked their rears off and donated and done everything in this community over the years. Problem is that volunteerism is not there like it used to be, okay? Now, with that said, it bothers me also that I can go over to Ritter, Louisiana tonight and I probably eat at three places downtown Ritter, maybe even hear a band and have a good time and do things. I can go to Leesville and go around the courthouse up there. I went over there just for this purpose the other day. Went over there and I'm looking at something else I'm going to be throwing towards this council about something we might want to do, to make Jasper not better than other places but on an equal playing field with other places. I mean, with downtown Woodville and, and all these other places look better than downtown Jasper surrounding our courthouse square, it's a reflection on Jasper, just as that youth baseball park is. And we sit up here and say, "Well, we ain't got the money to do this, we ain't got the money..." I understand that. And I said as mayor, and I'll say right here today, when people, tonight, when people get in, go home tonight and they're watching Leave It To Be or whatever they're doing, that dates me, don't it, ain't no Leave It To Be, but whatever they're doing, they want to be able to call a policeman and they don't want just a policeman to come, they want a qualified, educated policeman that can handle the job to come. When they dial that fire department, they want a fire department firing, a fireman there and they don't want him standing there with a squirt gun in hand. They want him to have the apparatus that he needs to fight the fire to do the job. When they turn on the electric, they want electric light to come on. When they flush the toilet, they don't care where it goes, but they want it to go somewhere else. When they turn on the faucets, they want water to come out and they want their garbage to be carried away. So, we have to put our, our confines into that and that's my priorities. But also, somebody had a little foresight to create this park down here. And you can't tell me these people in Jasper haven't enjoyed it. It's probably the most enjoyable things in this community and it adds to the quality of life. And I think what we're talking about spending is roughly $25,000, $26,000 if JECO will come up with the other part. And city's administration has found that we can take this from Nixco Funds, which basically is a project of the settlement deal between the Vernon Power Authority and City of Jasper under Cambridge Project and the San Francisco Power Agency. And I think, and all this is... And I made a trip, went up to Center and looked at these people's work. Now, what they've done up there is, if we do this tonight, see Center just started this like, what was it?
I think it's two years ago.
Yeah, or three, I think.
Oh, is it?
Engineering.
The engineering would have been three, yes.
Three years ago. And so they're now doing it. And I went up there and I looked at this firm's work and I was very satisfied with what they've done. I mean, you have to have compass, our GPS these days to know which way you're going. And I think that this engineering study, if JECO comes up with the other part of it, would give us a somewhat of a map to decide what it is. One of the reasons that it is, there's a lot of infrastructure down there to look at and decide. The other thing that I want to go into and I won't drag this on because I hate people to do that. We've got a safety issue downtown Jasper. We've got a problem of feral cats. We've got buildings that, if we have a fire down there tonight, it might, it might take the whole thing out. We've got wiring that's hanging down in the streets down there. We've got buildings that are out of code. We've got glass that's hanging off, waiting for some kid to touch it, cut them all to pieces. We've got a lot of problems in downtown and I think we're going to have to address this. We're not only going to have to move forward with a aggressive, and I'm going to say this again to the city's building code director, an aggressive campaign of codes down here. And if somebody blames you, it's, tell them the mayor said it. Tell them to come see me. We need to aggressively pursue codes for the safety of our town and our people. And then on top of that, we at the same time need to come up with a decision, trying to come up with a plan down there to make. I don't think any of us want to see Jasper look like Detroit or Port Arthur downtown. And I'll let you finish it.
Listen to me.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct in assuming that this, that we're talking about it strictly for a plan?
Yes.
No funding for any work?
No. But if we have a plan, there's funds out there for mainstream projects and, and there's all, there are funds out there, but we have to have a plan.
Further questions? What would you think if you got the people from Arboretum, Civic Club, Master Garden, the Garden Club, the Rose Society, what you think they could probably come up with a pretty good plan to?
Not structurally. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I have friends with all those people, but I don't think that anyone has the expertise as an architect to be able to tell us, you know, which roads and sidewalks need to go which way and what type of, I mean, I'm interior designer. I'm an interior designer and I'm not law by law. So, there's, there's, there's a lot more to it than what, except for plants. It's not just about planting. It's, it's about structures and how to direct people to this, to the downtown area and to encompass a larger area. We have a larger downtown than we use. There's buildings that go all the way to Water Street that would connect to the Arboretum and the Butterfly exhibit. And on Model Street, you know, there's, there's shops. You know, there's new shops on Model Street that we could, you know, and that runs right past Civic Club. So, we're, we're kind of, you know, Civic Club is behind whatever the council can approve on this to do any higher part and so are the, if ever a member of garden clubs that I've spoken to, the Master Garden Club, the Arboretum, they're all behind something doing and they're willing to pitch in and do whatever. But they're, if we had a cohesive plan, and you have to pay for that. I mean, it's not the sidewalk thing, it's something that, having sidewalks and parking and having it all look like it belongs together in our dated community, which is attractive if we keep it up.
I think you, any indication as to what their plan will come to?
We can take it in phases. I mean, we don't have to do it, it's not what we would... And we don't have to do everything in their plan. Maybe there's somebody that's a building owner that wants to do their thing themselves. You know, if someone said, "This will look like this if we do this." If someone said, "This will look like this if we do this," I think that back, if I owned a building downtown and somebody said, "Well, if you just do, invest this, you're going to get, you know, this much more traffic," you know, I mean, it's got to direct people to be able to come in here and open a restaurant, open a coffee house, open, you know, a place for people to shop. I mean, there's only a few places to shop here besides Wal-Mart, and I would keep my money here instead of giving it to the UBS guy if I had someplace to go, and I know that there's a lot of me out there. Can I get your question? Sir? Okay. I mean, I would like that. Tell me to shut up, and I'll go away.
I'm going to call all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay. Alton's opposed, so we've got three for, and one opposed. Huh? Okay, did you vote for? Okay, so measure passes. Let the record show the measure passes.
You did a good job.
Anything else on the agenda to be reviewed and discussed, let me down with standard adjournment.
My God.
We're already adjourned, but you can say what you want to, by the way.
Well, all too often, you get busy and you don't recognize our city employee. Okay? I'm going to recognize tonight, Rhonda Jovi Nash. She obtained the ICC certified permit technician certification, first of the city of Jasper. She's a lady. So, I appreciate it.